However, we're supposed to do this.
One, one more thing we have to do. I had closed the public hearing and I closed it prematurely, not on purpose, but our clerk said that she had these three and she didn't see them. And I want to give those three people the chance to voice their opinion. They, they showed up to the meeting before we vote. Joel, you gotta do me, this to me on the first one. Joel from Holly Hill. Buzz Lewiski?
Close, close. Buzz Lewitz.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Council, Mr. Reckonwald. I am Joel Buzzelitz, again, Battalion Chief with Volusia County EMS. I am here representing the local EMS unions, Local 77, Local 210. We are here supporting the county manager's proposed budget. We stand with our brothers and sisters with the fire department, saying that this general fund is exceptionally important to us, provides everything that we do in need to provide the service to the county. Looking at, you know, the exponential growth that the county has seen, just equates to an exponential increase in calls for service, both on the fireside and the EMS side. As Mr. Karaginos pointed out earlier, we're already struggling with both staffing issues as well as a shortage of ambulances. So, any cut in that budget whatsoever, that would affect us, would be monumental. As well as, you know, we're, I'm here supporting the hardworking employees of EMS, as well as the county in general, being that I'm here specifically kinda looking at any changes in the coal arrays that we would be looking at within the budget, and how that would affect us, along with increases in county benefits, general inflation. That coal array is really, you know, is, is, we're really dependent on that as employees. Aside from that, I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to come here and speak. I know that you didn't expect this, this last minute injection of a couple more people. But thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all, and again, I hope that we can approve the budget as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your service. Suzy Peace? Did she, she, thank you, Suzy. Mary Ann Connors?
Only because I drove over here. I can still count, even though I'm retired. I thank you for your support for this important and valuable program. I think that the vote reflects a commitment made to the citizens of the county, that they have championed its purpose and the millage, and I'm glad that you are also. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. So, that, now I will close the public hearing, and we will move to the reading of the millage rates for a vote with, on each rate.
You want to do each rate individually?
Counsel?
So, you have to do the general fund separate, and then you can do the rest of the rates together?
We can.
Like we did the first.
I said that, 'cause I, I thought Mr. Santiago might have an issue with one of them, but I'm...
Been some compelling arguments, that would say, that helped.
Okay. Let's do general fund, and then the rest of them.
The fiscal year 23, the fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the countywide taxing authority Volusia County General Fund is 3.3958 mils, which is lower than the rollback rate of 4.4192 mils by 23.16%.
Any discussion, or all in favor?
Do we have to do a separate motion? Motion to approve?
Second?
Who made the?
I made the motion.
Motion to approve the general fund millage rate by Matt Reinhardt, second by Troy Kent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the millage rate for general fund is, is set?
Alright, so bear with me, and I'll read the remaining rates before the vote. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the countywide taxing authority Volusia County Public Safety Fund is 1.4541 mils. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the countywide taxing authority Volusia County Library Fund is the rollback rate of 0.4209 mils. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the countywide taxing authority Volusia Forever Fund is 0.2000 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 0.1818 mils by 10.01%. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the countywide taxing authority Volusia Echo Fund is 0.2000 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 0.1818 mils by 10.01%. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the taxing authority mosquito control fund is 0.1781 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 0.1622 mils by 9.80%. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the taxing authority Ponce Inlet and Port Authority Fund is the rollback rate of 0.0692 mils. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the taxing authority municipal service district fund is the rollback rate of 1.6956 mils. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the taxing authority Silver Sands Bethune Beach Municipal Service District Fund is the rollback rate of 0.0117 mils. The fiscal year 23-24 operating millage rate for the taxing authority Fire Rescue District Fund is 3.8412 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 3.4649 mils by 10.86%.
Is there a motion for?
Motion to approve.
To approve the?
The millage rates.
The millage rates as read?
That's right.
Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Robbins. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The millage rates are passed seven to zero.
Okay, so the last part would be the operating and non-operating budget. The operating budget is presented at $1,194,11,655, and the non-operating budget is $203,773,659.
Is there a motion on these budgets?
I'll make a motion to approve the operating budget, and I'll mark that forth.
Motion to approve by Matt Reinhardt, second by Vice Chair Robbins. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those budgets are approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much for your work. Thank you to the public who came out and speaking up. That's what makes government work. Okay, now we have a whole agenda to get through, so we'll, we'll go back to, to item one, the consent agenda, and I, I will remind the public, I think the county manager really said it a long time ago, that we started this budget process in January, and, so we just finished, but it's gonna start right up again. It's a long process. Thank you.
Anybody need a break?
No.
Flalhan?
Yeah, we gotta get out of here.
Okay. Alright, we will move to the consent agenda. Does anybody have a, an item they'd like to pull for comment or vote?
A for comment.
Item A, single A.
Single A for comment and question, if I may, Ms. Chair.
Chairman, item R, just for comment? Not hearing any other. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda item. And I don't need to pull those, 'cause we're not voting on them, right?
That's right.
So, just for a comment, so, motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Troy Kent makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. The second was by Matt Reinhardt, and let's...
Mr. Brower, Amy would like to speak.
Yes. I was just getting to that. I've got a big note here, from the beautiful, what are we, a town or a village? Of DeLeon Springs, Amy Munizzi.
Well, I know you all are tired, and you've done a great job with everything, and thank you so much for your service, but this Gigi is just an opportunity for me to get up here and say how thankful we are, how appreciative we are to Volusia County Council and the staff and FDEP for funding this water and wastewater project. It is the difference between life and death for our community. In the 1980s, there was an underground fuel plume that was discovered in DeLeon Springs. It ended up being the, one of the largest underground fuel plumes in the state of Florida. It cost almost $14 million in a four-phase cleanup for the FDEP to clean it up, and it was a disaster for our community. If you were there, you know, the 30s through the 80s, it was a beautiful community, thriving, and when that underground fuel plume was discovered, along with the straw and packing house closing, it was a disaster for this community, a disaster. And if you come to DeLeon Springs, you see a decrepit community. The downtown is pathetic looking. And this water and wastewater project, I cannot, I cannot state well enough how this brings back life. I mean, water is life, period, for all of us, but this is life to this community. And so, I, I just want to take this opportunity to, to drive that point home, and thank all of you for supporting it. I know many of you were not part of that, but the grants that we have now to help people get their septic systems converted, huge win for our community, up to $10,000 per person in the PFA. So, we, we are just doing backflips over this, and it's a wonderful project, and we're very grateful. I also want to take this time to just say wonderful things about Aquaman himself, Mike Ulrich. If it wasn't for him, this project would not have happened. This was not his service area, but he was tasked by the FDEP as Volusia County Utilities Director to come into our community and do this, and I don't think he appreciated it very much, but we sure did. And he has been phenomenal. He's put the whole thing together. If it wasn't for him, this would not have happened. And then, of course, Erin Reed, who's the county engineer, she's done a phenomenal job. And Sam Farrell is the guy in the field. I stop and see his Volusia County vehicle about once a week, and pull off 17, and talk with him about what's going on, and he always knows exactly what's happening. So, can't say enough good things about Volusia County Utilities, and it's a top-down thing, because it comes from Mike Ulrich, his whole standard of running that entire department. It permeates through all of the people in that department. So, can't say enough good things about Aquaman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll call for the vote, and then we can take the comments on A and R. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved, seven to zero. Item A for comment, David Santiago.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. A question first, and, thank you, Cyrus. One thing I didn't understand, and I apologize for asking this question ahead of time, but is Hertz not coming back? Is that what I read, and is accurately?
Hertz is coming back. The only one that's not coming back is Thrifty, and I'm Cyrus Callum, Aviation and Economic Resources, and good evening, gentlemen, Mr. Chair. Thrifty's not coming back, but there's been a consolidation in the rental car industry. You have about three parent companies, and then there's about seven brands. So, Thrifty is the brand that is not coming back, but we are having Avis Budget, Enterprise, Alamo National, Hertz and Dollar will be returning.
So, there'll be one space open, too?
So, there's one space that's currently open, but we're, we're giving them the opportunity to take over that space at a later time.
Okay, and, and I guess my comment, by the way, this was a good increase for us.
Absolutely.
This is a good win for, for the airport, so congratulations to you and your team. That's, I also wanted to highlight that.
Well, I, I tell you, I, I am honored and privileged to have been able to steal Mr. Mihai Smigalsky from a variety of other airport opportunities that he had before him, and we wanted to bring this up to best industry standards and practices, so the way that we did this invitation to bid, put us in the best light, and had to take advantage of, as most revenue opportunities as we could with this opportunity.
And thank you for your leadership on that, George, because we talked about this early on, I remember, about how do we maximize more returns on these car rental companies, so thank you for fulfilling that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Cyrus. I think the airport as an enterprise zone is a shining star in, for Volusia County.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to your team. Okay, item R, Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to publicly mention this item, because the Ormond Beach Library, from what I understand, is the highest, has the highest usage of any library in Volusia County, and our lease that we had just approved with Ormond Beach is now $1 per year. And there was a bond on this project that was, I believe, there for 30 years, and the county paid $134,000 a year for this bond, well, until it was paid off. And now that that's done, this county sat down with the city of Ormond Beach, and you all negotiated the price of $1 a year, and I want to applaud the leadership in Ormond Beach, and I want to applaud the leadership at the county, because they're all county residents. And from what I understand, that is what I believe all of the other libraries pay, so I'm pleased that Ormond is on the same track, and this is a win for all county residents. Great work, Mr. Reckonwald.
Thank you, and I have to thank Susan Conchen and Lucinda for their hard work as they did the heavy lifting and negotiation. Thank you. A dollar a year. How do you sleep at night?
Hey, you just, you're talking about cutting expenses. There was $133,999 a year right there.
That's right. Okay, that takes us to item three, contract with GPS Civil Construction, Inc. for the Pioneer Trail and Sugar Mill Road intersection.
Good evening, Tad Casebeare, County Engineer. As stated, this is a contract for construction of the intersection improvements at Pioneer Trail and Sugar Mill Drive over in Ormond Beach. It includes adding turn lanes, as well as a traffic signal at a current four-way stop. County staff recommends approval.
David Santiago.
Amy, Chairman, move to approve item number three.
Okay, before we do that, just to keep my word, is there any questions for staff? First? The motion is to approve by David Santiago. Is there a second?
Second. And this is in New Smyrna Beach?
Yes, sir.
Not, not Ormond, okay.
Yes, I apologize. Everything's in Ormond Beach.
Just so you two know down there, when, when he said that, I went, I was staring at the screen, so.
Motion to approve by David Santiago, second by Danny Robbins. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. You are dismissed. Letter of agreement, item four, letter of agreement with Agency for Healthcare Administration regarding the Medicaid Managed Care Hospital Direct Payment Program.
Good evening, Counsel, Ryan Salsky, Chief Financial Officer. This item implements further an action taken by Counsel at the last meeting for the special assessments on hospitals. This is the money that the hospitals pay. We now have to sign an agreement with AKA to send that money to the state, so that the state can do what it does to draw down the federal funds and provide it to the hospitals. I can go into a lot more detail, but it's all on the agenda, I believe.
Any questions for Ryan? David Santiago?
Move to approve item number four.
Second.
Santiago moves to approve, second by Matt Reinhardt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, the program is approved, seven to zero, which takes us to item five, publicly owned and operated emergency medical transportation Medicaid Managed Care Supplement Payment Program.
Similar to the last agenda item, this is a program where state monies draw down federal dollars. We stand in the place of the state, so we have to contribute the state match. When we contribute the state match, it draws down more federal dollars, and ultimately, our ambulance service ends up collecting the money we contribute, plus the federal dollars for a net increase of approximately $5 million.
Any questions for Ryan Salsky? If there's no questions, David Santiago?
Move to approve item number five, Ms. Chair.
Motion to approve.
Second, Johansson.
Second by Jake Johansson. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that program is approved, seven to zero, which brings us to the last item of the night, item six, amendment number six to contract with TTEC Government Solutions LLC for toll collection services.
Good evening, Jessica Fentress, Volusia County's Coastal Director. We are here tonight to discuss renewing of the beach toll contract. As you're aware, back in April, we went out to a, a public solicitation, request for proposals for a combined beach toll and off-beach parking solicitation, in the hope that we could eventually combine a resident pass into one pass system. We advertised this nationally. We had two mandatory meetings that we held virtually. We had the players in the room that did parking and did tolls. Unfortunately, we only got four proposals. RFP closed on May 2023. A couple of factors played into deeming them non-responsive in June. Of the four proposals, one of them didn't even address beach tolls. Can't run with that. One of them didn't even address off-beach parking. You can't run with that. And then, with the implementation of amendment 10, we became aware that the county would not be able to exercise enforcement over off-beach parking. So, we deemed them non-responsive, and we started beginning, or we began our negotiations with TTEC, who currently holds the toll contract for an additional year. Lessons learned moving forward. We are going to be, our tolls and off-beach parking into two separate contracts. We are going to fast-track the off-beach parking. We believe that would be easier to implement the hybrid man automated toll contract. We talked about going to automation and a hybrid system. We hope to get that out this winter, 2023, 2024. This is just a basic history of the prior contract terms. It initiated in October 2015. We did an extension in 2017, and then they did a cost adjustment according to the contract terms, to basically meet your minimum wage price increase requirements that we had. They were not expecting to have this additional renewal, which is why we are now here requesting an additional one-year renewal. It will also include a price increase for the toll attendants that work out there every day when it's 105 degrees. They're still out there working, and it's raining, as well as some inflationary costs associated with continuing operations. So, we are looking for an approval of the second one-year renewal and contract amendments. I also have Mr. Andrew Clayton here with TTEC, and he is available for any questions. Did you need them?
Questions for staff? David Santiago?
It's a simple one, a little bit peeve. Is there any way we can get to a smaller sticker? Between the toll pass stickers, you know, oil change stickers, my window is all over the place. Do we need to have that big sticker?
Electric car, it doesn't have oil.
Let's just get, we could get rid of the...
I'm trying to get away from a sticker.
These guys are being funny. I mean, can we, let me?
I'm, I'm trying to get away from a sticker.
Perfect, thank you.
Or something as small as a, a very small RFID badge, that's teaching size.
Thank you. That's just so old school. That's why, thank you. That's more like Matt Reinhardt.
I concur.
Okay, David Santiago makes a motion to approve, second by Matt Reinhardt. And comments? I'll just make one. Pardon me?
I thought Jake was.
Jake, did you, okay, I'll let you go first, Jake Johansson, for a comment.
Yes, sir. I, I've had some conversations, and I think, Jessica, you've probably had a lot more than I, with Bob Williams and the, some of the leaders in New Smyrna Beach, as well as some people that are, that are very involved in the task force. And, and at this point, I think there's enough people between consultants and, and people who, who are very interested in getting this whole process somewhere where we don't have 20 stickers or 20 barcodes and, and 20 different apps. So, no matter where you go in the county, maybe one or two apps to get a parking spot that, that, that we either pay for or we don't, and, and then access to the beach. So, I, I think extending this so we can come up with a better final plan is, is well worth it, and, and I support it. I appreciate all the work you've done. I'm sorry, this was kind of a shoot-in-a-blank, but we'll make some progress. In the meantime, thanks for covering it and, and making sure we're doing the right thing in the short term. I'm looking forward to automating as, as much as we can within our budget means. I know there's a lot of cool things we could do, but at some point, we're gonna have to cut off the great idea factory and get to business. Thanks.
Thank you, Jake. I'll, I'll just add that I, I'm okay with the extension, but I, I've gotta say that I, I hope, I, there's a lot of things that you're considering, and, so it'll be a different program that, that comes back. I hope that this council will consider completely removing the toll booths and getting rid of that obstruction. Mr. Kent brought up a program this year that would bring in $10 million in parking. That recovers the cost without the cost of toll booth operators backing traffic up to A1A, and so I'm, this is directed more to the, my fellow council people than, than you, that I, I hope that we will continue to consider that as we move ahead. Vice Chair Robbins?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Fentress, just at your leisure, at your convenience, can we get the actual numbers of the projections of some of these parking figures that are being put out there? We really need to drill down on that, because it keeps coming up. I think the numbers may be off. I know it's contentious. I know it'd be the easy thing to do not to address it at some point, but I think it's, it's right. We have to address it and look at the actual factual numbers. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion by David Santiago. Troy Kent?
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, that last comment, 'cause I, I think the numbers are all off a little bit. The chairman said 10 million, and my numbers are 9,950,000.
You need to be accurate.
So, you know, I, I haven't been, been told that, that's wrong, and until I am, 'cause I still have my paper here from first couple of months meeting where I crunched all those numbers, and I, I think we do need to have staff drill down and, and give us that information, so that we're, we're giving information that's not just, you know, Troy Kent numbers work that he followed from the new, city of New Smyrna Beach. Only, I think, operating, like I said, I think he gets to a 40% or 60% of the time, but regardless of, of that, I'm gonna be a no on this tonight, Chairman, because of all the reasons I've been pounding on since I was elected.
Okay. Any other comments? Then, all in favor of amendment number six to contract with TTEC, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
And I think I just heard one aye from Troy Kent in opposition, so it, and David Santiago's not here, so it passes five to zero. Five to one, I'm sorry. Danny Robbins, I think you are exactly right, and that's really what I'm asking, is that next year, we're moving from here out, that we really look at this and, and in fact, do drill down on it.
No, yeah, and I appreciate that, Chair. We just have to remember, there's a lot of other, we're, we're talking gross numbers and not net. We're not accounting for expenses, enforcement, plus, 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 all, we already had a vote on this. So, it's really in somebody that was on the prevailing side. If they want to bring it up, they can, but I just want this out there for informational purposes only. Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to final public participation, and he is gone.
There he is.
You scared us. You scared us. Let's see who it is. We have one request by John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side? Since it's not even close to 2:30 in the morning, I guess I can talk all I want. Actually, it's basically two things. One, with regard to the posting on the internet for the county with regard to the fuel tanks. If you could put any public meetings so that the public will go to these meetings in force and with enough people, they're not gonna do it, all right? Secondly, I was at a mayor's conference, and a gentleman from DeBarry came up talking about the live locally, or live, live local, and the problems that it creates. So I know three of you were at the meeting, but since you're not allowed to talk to each other, you may not have mentioned it. But it is unintended consequences. The way he brought it up, there was a commercial property with $2 million in taxes. They let the permit die so that they could then put apartments on it, and the apartments would pay no taxes whatsoever. So if this is the case, we absolutely don't want it in the county, especially any of our cities. So if you have the opportunity to discuss, live local, if that's a problem, I would suggest you all talk about it. And other than that, have a good night.
Thank you. County manager. Final comments?
Actually, I gave my report with the update of the fuel terminal. Thank you. And I do, just for a second, let me just thank everybody, the council for working on this all year long with the budget. And it's good work. We're, we are driving down the cost per capita. We'll continue to do that. And, you know, I just wanna thank my team publicly for all the work they do to, to put together that, and I'll go and operate with it, which is very important. And if you recall, there's also a $5 million goal we've set within there that, and we've budgeted for, to, for savings. So there's an actual negative line in there to reduce costs. And I think also the budget staff, they don't get a lot of time out here, but they're the people behind the scenes that make sure that that budget is carried out, and also the ones that put it, help put it together physically as all the numbers come in and crunch. Thank you.
County attorney Michael Dyer.
Yes, sir. This after, this afternoon, I sent you an email I received, also this afternoon, from an attorney that represents, actually, the attorney and executive director of the Florida Tax Collector Association. A few days ago, I had, actually yesterday, had emailed you that we were contacted last Wednesday afternoon by this attorney who's representing Will Roberts, the tax collector related to the PACE program. I know we have talked in the past about that. That's essentially a program that statute authorizes and allows them to help finance for property owners, both commercial and residential, different home or property improvements, windows, roofs, solar panels. Mr. Roberts has been sued. I understand there's 16 tax collectors in Florida that have been sued by the Florida PACE Funding Agency. I understand that's one of four PACE entities or special districts in the state. And as I understand it, from the letter that's been given to me in that phone conversation, the tax collector and the other 15 tax collectors are not putting the special assessments that Florida PACE Funding Agency has issued to them to reflect transactions on the property tax bill because they do not believe it's a valid special assess, special assessment. So their request, which was memorialized in the letter I sent to you today, was they're asking the county to intervene in the lawsuit against the tax collector. I know I've talked to you in the past about, this has been kind of an evolving situation. There are, as I understand, at least four counties in Florida that, and one city that have brought their own lawsuits against this particular PACE agency alleging that they are not authorized to operate within their jurisdiction, whether it be a county or a city, unless there's an interlocal agreement that's been entered into between that jurisdiction and the PACE agency. So last year, this council did approve an interlocal agreement for PACE agencies to operate for commercial properties, but did not approve it for resi, excuse me, residential properties. I understand there are some cities, excuse me, in the county that have authorized PACE to operate and others have not. So I did say, when I was contacted by Mr. Qualls, the attorney for Mr. Roberts, that I would bring his request forward. I do believe that there is a basis for the counties that file their own actions against PACE after looking at it and talking with several county attorneys that are involved in this dispute. I think there is at least a good faith argument. I see where they're coming from. But it's all happening very fast, and it's all very recent. So my recommendation would be that you give, give me direction tonight, just because I know Mr. Qualls, I think he has a hearing come up and looking for a reaction, or if you're not comfortable with acting tonight, I can generate an agenda item for that. But if you were to direct us to intervene in the tax collector case, I would recommend that we be authorized, that I be authorized to prepare suit on the county's behalf against PACE, because I believe there are some arguments that are unique to counties and cities that could be articulated in that action that arguably may be even stronger arguments. It really does boil down to a home rule issue that whether or not this entity, this organization is authorized to operate in your jurisdiction without your consent.
Jake Johansson.
Yes, sir. I have a question for the attorney. Mike, you said that we have an interlocal for commercial, not residential. However, the way PACE, particularly one agency, is, is using the law, can they offer it to residential even though we don't have an interlocal?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I should have addressed that. So when PACE approached us and local governments around the state last year about entering into a local, interlocal agreement, that was consistent with how they had operated, as I understand it today, that they would ask for the interlocal agreement to operate. There was a court case decided last October in Leon County in what's called a bond validation proceeding, which is a fancy way of a government seeking to, to approve bonds at issues upfront rather than having a legal challenge of those bonds down the road. And so it's, it's routine, and PACE sought to have some bonds validated in Leon County. The court ruling in that case, I think, went beyond typically what should be decided bond validation proceeding. The bonds were validated, which was not a surprise, but there were some statements made by the judge in that case that PACE was allowed to operate countywide with or without the local government's consent. And so PACE has changed, this particular PACE agency, Florida PACE Funding Agency, so it's one of the four PACE agencies out there, changed its course and then said, you know, we don't need your interlocal agreement to operate. It's my understanding that's been the approach they've taken statewide, and they're relying on that bond validation ruling Leon County for that position. The county's argument and exchange is, number one, that bond validation ruling doesn't apply to us. The court went, to the degree the court made statements on that issue, was really, he didn't, he or she didn't have jurisdiction to do that. And, and two, that the statute requires an interlocal agreement. And when you look at the legislative history of the statute, I think it's pretty clear that at least the discussion by the legislative staff at that point was, an interlocal agreement was also required. The tax collector disputes a bit different on the same issue, but the tax collector, at least 16 of them, have not put the special assessments from this PACE entity on the tax roll, and so PACE has sued them to compel them to do so.
David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and from, from, from my recollection and discussions, the, the tax collector's case is probably, lack of a better term, the, the one that probably has a less chances of being successful.
Yeah, and actually, in the letter that we got this afternoon, up to this point, my understanding is Sarasota County's tax collector lost in the lawsuit brought against that tax collector. Hillsborough's tax collector just won in their case. So it's different jurisdictions. I think the county and city argument here is arguably strong because you're interpreting the statute. I think if somebody wanted to challenge an entity, wanted to challenge these special assessments, I think the governing body, the city or county's arguably best suited to do that.
Correct, because they have to have the interlocal agreement with us. That's our position.
That would be the argument, yeah.
Correct. Chair and councilman, I was, I think we should pass on intervening on the tax collector's case, because it's not a very strong case. If we do want to do anything, we could just have our own, which I think is what Mike's asking, if we want to give him direction to do that. That's the best chances we have of stopping this, what I believe is a predatory lending. So I would be in favor. As a matter of fact, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we direct our legal team to prepare and do whatever is necessary to enter into legal proceedings against this PACE program.
I'd second that.
Motion by David. Motion is made by David Santiago to enter into a, a legal dispute with our county attorney on this case, seconded by Matt. And I, I agree, you called it predatory lending. At the very least, it's deceptive lending. And so I, I look at this, and I, I would like to hear from you too, Don. I look at this as protecting the residents of Volusia County, and a lot of times, they're going after elderly individuals, and they, they pay the rest of their lives for, through the nose, for a house, for solar panels, for roof.
There are certainly policy arguments can be made against PACE. Those wouldn't be what we'd be arguing in the lawsuit, but certainly that, that debate has been ongoing, and if you do pass this motion, I can, you know, politely respond. I'm not saying that their lawsuit doesn't have merit. I just think in looking at the arguments, I think the county and city arguments are compelling.
Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir. I, I, since we're in, kind of in discussion here, I, I think not only is it important that we, that we move forward with this, I also think that whatever we can legally do, George, to communicate caution to the community that, that if, if, you need to read everything in these PACE programs, number one, and, and then if, if we are gonna file suit, then we also need to leverage, leverage our lobbyists and legislators to, to change, protect Volusia County home rule, or, or somehow strengthen the current legislation so it stops the predatory lending. I, I, I think I was the one that, that, well, our council, when I was the city manager, signed the interlocal in Port Orange. And, and the two companies that talked to us had great programs, and people started using them because they knew that it would be a, a mortgage, a long-term fix to a short-term problem. And, and it seemed like they understood it. But now it's getting a little too predatory for me to be comfortable with. So I, I would like to, to really package this up and make sure that people right now know that they're, they're possibly could be in danger. So it's the same thing with, with the roofing scam after a hurricane. So I want to be careful and make sure everybody's aware.
Attorney Dyer.
Yes, sir. I did run into Mr. Booker earlier today and understand that the Florida Association of Counties is moving forward with a recommendation for legislative change that seems to be consistent with the argument we'd be making. So I'll make sure you get information on that as well.
Councilman Troy Kent.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. I won't repeat what everybody else has said because you've made great valid points. There's no doubt in my mind, this is predatory and wildly inappropriate. I'm, I think we do, Mr. Johansson, need to talk to our legislators in Tallahassee. I, I'm just hopeful that the clear minds that they have, you know, I know that this group has been busy up there, I'm sure lobbying as well. And, you know, shoulda, coulda, woulda, you know, look at Mike Dyer down there, who honestly, I think, is batting a thousand since this new council's been sitting here. And I wish that our tax collector would have come earlier with this, because I feel like we're putting Mike in the 11th hour, bottom of the ninth, we're putting him in and telling him to swing for the fences, and I don't think it's a great position for him and his legal team. That being said, I'd rather do something than nothing. So, Mike, try to keep that a thousand.
Yeah, no, no pressure there. I'm, I'm looking at Sarah and Kevin back there.
Yeah, they look pretty excited.
They do.
Job security.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from David Santiago, second by Matt Reinhart, to turn it back to you, Mr. County Attorney. It sounds like you're gonna come back to us and tell us the, your best strategy for, for moving ahead.
Yeah, I, my understanding, if the motion passes, I would be authorized to file a legal action against PACE, and I will keep you updated. There may be things I need direction on along the way. I know there's been some discussion, at least with one county, about kind of revisiting the bond validation proceeding, and that might be a separate legal maneuver. So I, I will come back to you on that, though. I don't have enough to, to ask right now.
Okay. All in favor of turning the county attorney loose on this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
You're cut loose, Sarah.
Where is she?
She's hiding.
Okay. Is that it?
It is, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Okay, we'll go to County Counsel, Don Dempsey, you're first this time.
Oh, okay. Last, a couple of meetings ago, I, I brought up, I was approached by a couple of tow truck companies, wondering if we could get our tow rates up equivalent to the surrounding counties. My understanding is, it hasn't been adjusted in probably nearly a decade, and they're talking about with inflation. I don't know when, I mean, it was quite a time ago, from what I've been told. So I just was wondering if, if we're making any progress on that, getting comparable numbers from surrounding counties, just to make sure that we're allowing them comparable rates to everybody else.
I have spoken with the sheriff's office about that, because they're the ones that actually use the majority of the towing contract, and I'm just waiting for them to get back to me as to what they would like to move forward on.
Okay.
Some of the preliminary rates, though, I will tell you, I think we're charging more than Miami Dade and some other places. So when we first did start looking.
So when we first did start looking at that, you know, we are charging at a pretty fair rate. So we'll get that straightened out with the sheriff's department because it's really their contract now.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Yeah, my understanding is Flagler, though, just bumped theirs up, and I think possibly Lake, I'm not, or Marion, one of them, but, okay, I just want to make sure they're getting, you know, treated fairly, that's all. Thanks. And that's all I have. Thanks, guys.